You wait for it, right?
I have a chip for that.
Recording in progress.
Okay. Being six o'clock, we'll call the meetings to order.
You'll be called over.
Oh, yeah.
We will call the cab to order.
Great. Um, the meeting is being audio recorded and followed remotely on Zoom. Uh, and is it being carried live on RCTV as well?
Yes.
Um, is there any, we can open up a public comment. Is there any public comment?
None.
Here, okay. Uh, then I guess we just move on with our.
We have, uh, for the cabinet first item is, uh, approval of the meeting minutes. So I'm just trying to read the books.
Move that the city, the RMLD Citizen Advisory Board approves the February twenty second, two thousand twenty four open session meeting minutes as presented on the recommendation of the general manager and the board secretary.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Val Upstein, no, is not present for that meeting. So this is three, zero, one up sent.
You guys all set?
Yep.
Mm hmm. Okay. So next we have our, um, in territory, solar. Uh, Bill?
Yes. Yep. So, um, I just want to run through, uh, there are a lot of projects going on now, and I just wanted to focus on the solar opportunity in our territories and our towns and, uh, what we're doing to make sure that we maximize.
Great, thank you.
This should be.
You might have to dance around.
Oh, it's not on.
Oh. It's, oh. Um, so there are basically three types of, uh, solar that we're looking at. Um, the first is ground mount, you know, that's typical, uh, solar farm. Uh, but benefits are it has economies of scale, you know, they're larger plants, so the the fixed costs right over more, uh, megawatts. So there tends to be, uh, uh, a lower installed cost per megawatt hour produced. Um, and we're actively developing several projects. Um, one, of course, you've known Maple Meadows. We're also recently, um, met with the Lynnfield Water Board where they approved, uh, us, uh, developing a solar plant there, um, next to one of their new pumping stations. And then we're looking at a number of Wilmington parcels in order that might be, uh, uh, applicable for ground mount solar. And we think the total potential is somewhere between ten and twenty megawatts in, in our service territory. Um, and we're also teaming with the municipality, so we are talking to all of them about, uh, adding solar onto, uh, onto schools, uh, with the with the water district in Lynnfield about adding it to the pumping station building. Um, we're, we're looking at the middle's, middle and high school at North Reading, which is a, a large building with a lot of potential. Um, the Parker and Killam schools here in Reading. Um, and then, uh, we're looking also at, uh, solar canopies and parking lots at those, uh, schools. Though the cost is about one and a half times the cost of rooftop, so the economics are a little more challenging on, uh, solar canopies. Um, and the total capacity we think potential is about five megawatts. And we've got our eyes on about two and a half megawatts of actual projects where we've, um, priced it out and laid it out, and I'll go through some of those.
Question, um, two questions actually. First, solar canopy, can you just explain?
Oh, sure. The solar canopy is in a, in a parking lot when you build, uh, a frame.
Park underneath.
Yeah, park underneath.
For the purposes of only having the solar access above.
But it also provides some benefits, like it provides shading and, and, um, you know, the snow cover. Um, that, that's typically why.
Got it.
You're not hitting the asphalt.
Yes, or the car. So, right, you need less air conditioning.
And then I know there's a lot of activity happening with the Parker and Killam school project. So how are we engaging with that in a formal way?
On Parker, we have a proposal ready, so with the pricing. Um, so what we'll do is we'll, uh, we're offering a lease payment to the school in order to rent the roof, and then we'll take all of the output. And they won't have to maintain the system. All they do is get a, a lease payment from us for the, for using the roof.
And we sat down with the town manager, walked him through it, and we scheduled him some time to go to the school and, uh, select work.
Okay, and then we're actively involved on the Killam Building School Committee. So it'll be, this is on the new school.
Got it. Okay.
So a quick question, each type of the, um, rooftop canopy and ground mount solar, um, to get the credits for, do, does, do you have to supply a smart meter? Register the data?
Yes.
Okay, so there's different rates. We, we set the rates, right?
Yes.
It, it's the state, so.
On this particular case, this is big. So these are all, are, all these projects that Bill is walking through are in-territory RMLD-owned generation assets.
So, okay.
So they'll, we'll basically be taking power from them in lieu of taking power from the grid.
Okay, so that, the, the reason, but that, yeah, the reason for that ask is because it gets very, very tricky because if you have different meters and different sources, there's different rates. You're doing handoffs. And if you're handing something off to the, you know, one canopy, one rooftop, and then one, there's different, there's different rates of, of, for those, but if they're our asset, if they're not our assets.
That's where it gets more complicated. Part of the reason it's our asset, but I think the, the other thing is that the metering is very important because there are specific meters that we need to do because we've got to report back.
That's correct.
To NEPL in order to claim the credits.
That, yeah, and then on the.
And that's what we really want. Well, it's not, that's, we, what, we need those, the credits being the certificates.
O, o, ownership becomes key then.
Absolutely.
And, and then on the canopy, crazy question, but it has solid canopy design, right? Yeah, yeah, okay, it's not, there's no partitions in the canopies because partitions in the canopies don't, don't work. It's, it's just, we figured that out, that it doesn't work. Ice comes in and drops on your counters and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, you want a good drain.
Yeah, yeah, it has to be a solid canopy. Can't, can't be, can't be partitioned.
What about on privately owned buildings?
Yeah, so like the C, the CNI customer.
When we get to the private, just to follow up on the questions about the schools. So where, where does it stand? You, you've presented to the town manager.
Town manager, town and, and, uh, Reading.
The head of facilities in Wilmington.
Okay, but in, in terms of, in terms of Reading.
In terms of.
But just because I get inquiries sometimes about our town, my town meeting. What is the next step to, we're forward with either part?
We're gonna schedule, um, a meeting with, um, Tom, that, yeah, school committee, the, the principal of the school program.
Tom Wise.
Yep, and then also we'll have to present in front of the select board. Okay, so we're, we're finishing, so we have a, a plan laid out, dollars, numbers, et cetera, we have a draft agreement.
Okay, for Parker.
Yes.
But what about Killam, which is, I know, just in context.
What we've offered is that we would, um, we would, uh, bu, we would pay for the solar panels, so they're going to need to include it in the budget.
And again, but again, it would be a lease situation, like you'd, you'd have the same business arrangement as you.
Yeah, we, we're trying to keep it all the same, a dollar per kilowatt hour, we expect to come off of it, so that's, everyone's getting the same, um, offer.
Yes, the development of the Killam School is still preliminary. They're going through a variety of steps. In that process, there is a sustainability subcommittee to the building committee that's developing the Killam School.
Right.
As a member or outgoing member of the Reading Climate Committee, I have been a part of that sustainability effort. I will stay a part of that sustainability effort, even though I'll be rolling off the climate committee.
Mm hmm.
Um, but still be a voice for this committee in terms of where that's going.
Okay, great.
They've been looking at various ways of heating and cooling that space. They've got, uh, fossil fuel option just for comparison, but there's a number of different ways that they're talking about using non-carbon.
Okay.
Uh, or electrical, uh, systems. Um, won't go into that because they're just, they're going through that process, they're evaluating options, and, and they'll present that to the Sustainability Committee, and they'll make a recommendation, but that building will be all electric. Uh, and therefore, having a solar power roof is, is the way to offset that cost to the, to Reading. Um.
Separate, they would be separate systems, like the, the solar would, how are the school, the solar would separately create energy that would.
Well, how the wires go, but, but yes, it is a, this solar panel would be owned by RMLD, and they would provide.
So, yeah, so Killam is still a working, this is back to your original question. Parker is very clear in terms of, we're gonna basically lease space on the rooftop, we're gonna write them a check on a regular basis. Um, the energy, it, it's most economical for everybody involved that it flows back into the RMLD network. And the, the benefit to the school is a regular payment, and it's basically, it's equivalent to lease payment. So that's the model we're going after. Um, the Parker, like, we're, we want to get that project started. Ideally, get it contracted this year, so it gets installed no later than next year.
What, and what does action look like on the town side to make this formal and have it actually happen?
They have to approve the lease.
The contract, at least.
So that paperwork's in front of the town staff to look at, figure out.
Yeah.
The contract's not, the proposal, the proposal is, we haven't, we haven't, so we've got to take the contracts.
Okay.
We have to do a presentation to the school and then to the select board, but we've talked to the town manager already, said, great, keep it moving forward.
Okay.
I take, a, a lot of sense of the concept that you use solar, you use it in that space. What's left over, you give back to the grid. And these larger, like, canopy environments, if that happens, you, you get engaged in this very complicated. Who gets what, how do you get paid for it? So it's very clean just to say, I do this, you do this. Exactly how we're saying it, so, yeah, it, it, it becomes much, much cleaner, uh, handle.
Do we have a board liaison to this process, or do we need one?
Oh.
Like meeting with Raby, like, I mean, a formal one where like if the school committee has a question, board to board, they go to you, or?
I, I can serve that role, I mean, I.
And I'm also on.
Okay, but I'm talking, you know, just talking about, for, the Reading discussion.
Well, it's not, because it affects every town.
Okay, true.
Um, so we can look at it narrow and say that, really every town in the sense of, the unattractive part of this whole thing is when you go to sell it to a town, you say, I'm gonna give you a lease space. That check's gonna come in, it's gonna go into the town's general fund, it's not gonna come to me, and it's not going to the school, right? So when you lease space, I don't see a bill, but if I get some of that electricity, and I can say I'm not paying that electric bill a thousand dollars a month, it actually went to my building opposed to the general fund. So that's my only, and Greg and I have had this conversation, I'm, you on the back.
So that's, thank you, yeah.
So the way we're gonna approach that, um, we'll give the option. You can send it to the general fund, or we could put it as a bill credit on that particular school building, which addresses your issue.
That's why, like I said, when you're selling it to the stakeholder, the school department, or the town select board, or whoever, the lease sounds good until, like, if I do a LED project in a building, that refund doesn't come to me to put more LED lights, and that goes into the general fund.
Okay.
So as much as the town still gets it, I, you know, the stakeholder who's got a budget to manage, it's better when I have a.
So that's, that's why we want to have the option, and we have the ability to do it, and we can do it cleanly, which is basically.
I, I don't think you can. I don't think you can give them a credit. I don't think they get the best of both worlds. You have to decide which way to go. I don't think you can live, I don't think you could. Uh, to your point, I, I know that, yeah, you, you want the credit electricity to lower your bill. I don't think you're gonna be, if you're the generator, you're leasing, how it comes back, that meter spins back to Reading light, that doesn't.
There is no, it, so just so real clear, the connection does not go through the building's meter. It's connected to our grid only.
That's right.
And it is metered, but it does, it has nothing, so it just happens to sit on top of that building.
Right.
And the mechanism is, and we have the mechanism to do it, and we can track it, but whatever that lease, independent of what it generates, we've committed to X dollars a year.
On a lease.
A lease.
Yeah.
And the way we'll pay that lease is in the form of a credit on the monthly bill to that building. Now, it's based upon every, like, every, every, every town is a little bit different structure in terms of what building. This is exactly what we ended up doing with Lynnfield.
With that, right?
But again, the, when you're trying to sell it to somebody, and I have a budget, and I can, I'm gonna support it more when I know.
Get it to your budget.
My two million dollar electric bill or whatever for the year, I'm getting a percentage back, so I can show a savings, and when I budget, I can.
You're getting a lease paid.
Yeah, so, but when the other way, again, the town still benefits, but if it goes into the general fund, I, without a decision that town media, I can't take any of that money and spend it.
And, and Bob, back to your point, it won't be a mix of the two, it'll be A or B. But we, if they want a lease payment to the town, fine, if they want a credit on the bill, fine, we can do either one, but not a mix. Back to your point.
Yeah, but the credit on the bill would be, would be, that would be the lease payment.
Correct.
Not, it's not, it's not, you're not giving them the power.
Correct.
Sorry, you're just, this is how, that's how you pay the lease.
It is purely, it is a payment mechanism only, but back to, and every town's a little bit different, every building's a little bit different, so that's why we're trying to. The point that Dennis has brought up is a point that we've heard.
Yep.
And we're trying to make sure that to the best of our ability, we can accommodate that, because, again, you guys know intimately well, towns have all sorts of different departments and all sorts of different budgets. So get it as close to the benefit, to the place where the value is being created for us, get it as close to them as possible, and the current plan, and might, we might come across some other crazy thing. But, but current plan, we can send it to the general fund, but we'll probably end up doing more of it to apply to that build, that particular building, as a lease payment only, not tied to the energy.
And when you're selling to a school department, and you can say, geez, you can tie a science educational plan around the solar that's on, that's a great selling point to a school, but financial people don't get the benefit of it, and that's why the money's gotta go back towards something that takes off my bill or, you know, any, right?
So we're, we're gonna, again, every installation's gonna be a little bit unique, and we're trying to make it, we're trying, we're trying to be as accommodating as we can with the, the point that Dennis brought up.
The reason I, I started on this path of discussing this is because I, I watched over a period of years where the topic of putting solar on municipal buildings went on and on and on and on and on, and, and it, and you go away from the meeting, and everybody had a different understanding of what got said, and, and how it was gonna work, and who was supposed to do what next. And that's the little reason I'm bringing it up, it just being, so that I think, I think it, it would be useful, and maybe if we need a board liaison, one of you, maybe it's Ray, because he's already doing it. Is like, just make sure, does everybody understand all of this? Anything we need to clear up? It would just, you know, we want his help facility.
Yeah, we, we're here to help.
We know.
Would be a big missed opportunity if, if we have these big projects and we don't.
Yeah, I think the other, the other important point, because we've looked at these for many years, and the big difference right now is that as RMLD, we now have access to the ITC, the Investment Tax Credit. But that makes it, that makes it more economically viable for us to be able to do it in a way, and the subcommittees, we've looked at some of the numbers, so it's actually advantageous. What you're seeing, what Bill's walking through here is, you know, we're trying to do in territory generation, and this, the first block in the in-territory generation is solar PV in territory. And so we're basically saying, here's all the projects we're doing, we're gonna, we're gonna, Bill will get to the bottom, and here's the maximum we're gonna do. And, and this is, not, not just this is the plan, this is what we're doing. And then we'll talk about other options in the next, or the next.
And not to get off topic, with the thinking of solar and roofs, in the eleven years I've been with the town, there's been two winters where we had to worry about snow load. And, um, now you have, and I can walk and shovel it easier without solar panels, once you've had those, and I'm dealing with older schools, start talking snow loads. Am I getting it off the solar panel safely, then off the roof safely and efficiently? And, um, that would be a topic that each town would have to talk about, because that's going to be a concern.
Bill will get into it, but it's gonna, it, it's gonna dramatically, there are a lot of buildings where they just snow or no snow, won't be able to take the load.
Yeah.
So that, the, the, Bill will walk through all the opportunity, again, big picture, let them get through the end, but, um, it, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna add, what, to be thirty megawatts.
Yeah, it's gonna be between, uh, thirty and, uh, forty.
So somewhere between thirty and forty incremental megawatts, and, you know, we don't know how it's gonna, we work at each individual, so we are aggressively trying to put this in place, and we just want to let you guys know, hear all the things that are going on. Quite well taken, so that we have a, a board person that, here's how it works. Bob's point, simple model, just keep it simple.
And you can't, like, you said, you can't always get on the roof, there's so many mini splits on every roof now, it just, it, it canopy is the.
It's limited.
Yeah, it's very limited. You, you, you might get two solar panels on a roof, it's not even economical to do it, because of the amount of stuff on the roof.
That was exactly what I'm gonna mean, my question is, how, at what point does it make sense to do that? Because I just think about, you, you've got your commercial industrial, but what about large residences, you know, how, how big does it need to be to make it work yet?
Wow, and, and right now, we're still, um, providing the incentive for customers in residential to, uh, to.
For them doing the asking.
Because it, it, we don't want to be in the position where we're maintaining a lot of residential. Whereas if we limit it to larger commercial industrial groups, then there's a little less risk.
And when you look at the newest schools, all the technology is going on the roof. You do have the mansards, which are the metal, it blocks everything. But that's only so much space to put solely, you'd never get enough power out of it to make it worthwhile. But if I look at the high school, every twenty feet, twenty-five feet, I have an amp.
Yeah.
Then they put a courtyard in the middle, so then that'll, that's all taken. So you start looking at all the space on a new school, it's a lot more difficult to fit.
Yeah, I think you, you gotta end up in the bottom line, we'll do as much as we can.
Do any municipal or school buildings in our four towns have solar on it now?
Say again?
Do any municipal or school buildings in our four towns have solar on the roofs now?
Only if they went to a Reading light, because the power purchase agreement prevents us from, unless we outright buy it. The power purchase agreement prevents us from getting a power purchase agreement with solar. So that's been Wilmington's thing for years, and then with, we keep talking about the older schools, there are a lot of schools sixty, seventy years old. Um, you want them from up to fifteen to twenty years. I don't know if I can commit to fifteen years, because we'd like to build new schools. So it did, you know, and again, Glenn and I, Greg and I have had a lot of conversations, it just starts becoming questionable of where it fits. So I think all four towns probably have a lot of similar aged schools. Um, so if you're gonna build a school and not tear down the other two, you know, consolidate, not tear down other schools, you may have that roof space and use that building for something else, but you've got to determine that it fits all sides of the coin.
And bottom, I mean, at, at the end, so we'll let Bill finish his slides.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I don't. Think about that.
Bottom line, this, we'll, we'll maximize it, but it's not big. Just, I mean, for all these reasons, it's complicated, it's not easy, that's why we haven't done a lot of them. And we'll do everything we can, but it, it, you know, it's, it's an important brick, it's an important block.
What is the potential? If you were to be able, for municipal buildings, how?
Five megawatts.
Ba, based on?
Based on our.
How much adoption you think you could get, or if you did follow them?
Well, uh, we can't do all of them, but some of them just aren't, they have very, like, like here, the Parker. This is the Parker School on the, in the photo, so that's very good, because it's, see, it's very flat and open. All of the panels are gonna get a similar sort of, uh, piece of the sun. Um, but some schools are, you know, they have, it's roofs and all sorts of angles, so it's difficult to.
It really comes down to, if a school is built in the sixty, seventies and eight, early eighties, you probably have a ton of open roof space. It was really the eighties and on that more and more equipment and air handles are going to the roofs.
You got a roof space, but not structural strength, I mean, so anyways, let.
Okay, yeah. Carry on.
No, no, that's, that's quick, good feedback. It's good that you care. Um, so the, the third category is a CNI customer, so the, we have a lot of large rooftops, right, and, and most of them are in Wilmington and North Reading, because those are where the big ones are. Um, there are, uh, roof suitability issues, and I'll go into detail on some of that in a minute. Um, but it does utilize, uh, underutilized roofs, and we think there's a potential for ten to twenty megawatts, uh, in those areas. Okay, uh, so the, the suitability of the rooftops, uh, first is the condition of the rooftops. Um, uh, a lot of our buildings are older, right? Um, and they haven't had a, a, a roof, uh, uh, redone in ten to fifteen years. Um, and they've got us, they have to sustain around twenty pounds per square foot in order to, um, to, you know, be safe, uh, for, for the lifetime of the solar panels, so. Like Dennis said, you don't wanna, if you've got an old building and you think you're gonna do the roof over, you don't want to put solar on there until you, you redo the roof, because you don't want to take off of the solar panels to do the roof over. Um, and we did contact, reached out to a regional roofing company, and, um, if you wanted to upgrade a roof as part of installing the solar project, it would cost you about thirty-five to forty dollars per square foot. Um, or, so it's not really doable unless you really need it. Uh, and that's what we found on Burbank Ice Arena, I think it's that they, the, the roof as designed was not suitable for the twenty pounds per square foot. Um, uh, so the, the, most companies have done repairs on the rooftops, and that, and if they've done actual, it can, uh, putting the solar panels on can cause damage to the, to the repairs that were done. Um, and then, uh, with the current costs of installing solar, um, and the, uh, our relatively low rates, it is difficult for commercial customers to see a payback worth investing in for them. Um, and of course, they're, they're not seeing the forward price curve, so they don't typically take into account what's gonna happen when we go fully non-carbon. So if we can invest now, right ahead of that, of that rise in, in prices, we'll be able to at least get the benefits of the, of the non-carbon, uh, solar energy uh, before it's really driving up the, the costs overall. And we really don't know when that will, what that will be. Um, we did do, uh, detailed analyses, this is just a, we use a, a program called Helioscope, and we can look at each roof and estimate the monthly, uh, generation from, from each project. Um, I won't go into detail on that. This is an example of, um, of a, uh, customer in Wilmington. Um, you can see we, the, the, all the blue things are, are solar panels. Um, the pink areas are solar canopies in the parking lot, so we've done that level of analysis on a number of of these industrial customers and some of the municipal customers. Um, this is another just, uh, solar canopy. Uh, this is another, uh, industrial customer, and you can see we, we do have to go around all the things that are on the roof, all the, the, um, air handling equipment. Um, and this is, uh, in Wilmington, this is an example, um, the Shawshin Elementary School. Um, you know, it's a relatively small system, it's a hundred kilowatts. Um, the price, you know, it, it will generate power, um, at ninety-two dollars, uh, uh, a megawatt hour, which is, you know, higher than our, our standard, um, and our base cost, but uh, we, the, the benefit is we don't have to import it into the territory. So we do offset a little bit of transmission capacity, because unfortunately, solar drops off in the evening. Um, that's one of the reasons we have the, the peak is because the solar stopped generating. But it does, we have calculated, and, and currently, solar eliminates about ten to eleven percent of the, the, the transmission and capacity loss. There is some benefit in that area. Um, this is the solar canopy for the Shawshin, and as you can see, in the dollar per megawatt hour, it's significantly higher at under twenty-nine dollars per, per megawatt hour, so we really have to think about how many solar canopies we would want to put in. Um, and here's Parker Middle School, um, so that where, you know, we've laid out all the areas that are good. I believe that the flat areas without, uh, panels were older roofs, I think you can see some of the, the, the patches on there. So that is an opportunity, someday they do those areas or roofs over, we could, we could add additional panels. Um, this, this, uh, system cost is about a hundred and four dollars per. Um, so in summary, that's again the Parker School. Um, we're actively pursuing, um, these development opportunities. Um, the ground mount has the, the best economies, but, uh, the large acreage we need for scale is also difficult to get. Uh, so that's the boundary on, on, you know, doing, you know, a hundred and seventy-five megawatts of solar. Um, there are many, uh, large rooftops in our area, but of course, we have to get buy-in from the customer, and we have to make sure the roof is suitable for it, but we'll continue those conversations with those customers about that. Um, and then the, our owner. Um, and then the, our ownership and the IRA tax credits, uh, do help offset the, the. What we think are kind of marginal economics. Um, but it will create a hedge, we think, in the future against. Power prices going above these levels because once we have it installed, um, you know, there's not, there's no fuel costs, right? So it's a, it will be a relatively flat rate. It's paying off the capital. And as long as the roof doesn't collapse, we'll be. You know, there will be no additional costs, right? Um, so that's.
What, what percent of, uh, of commercial industrial roofs have solar that, that are?
We only have about, about eight.
Percent?
No, not eight percent. Eight, eight projects that have been large enough. Um, we've got a customer in Wilmington currently putting in. We have, um. Uh, Camp Curtis put in some solar, uh, and then we had some other customers that, you know, a solar developer comes along, wants to use their roof. Um, but again, the economics have not been great for that, so there haven't been a lot of them. That's why we think if we go and say we will. We will kind of de-risk this for you and we will pay you a certain lease payment. So at least you're getting that benefit and you're also helping us to keep rates down by locking into this lower price now. Taking advantage of the limited time investment tax credits. Um, because even they, you know, I think they find, uh. They, they can't justify the investment even with the.
Right.
Tax credits because it's above their hurdle rate.
So the method of getting to try to get these built is RMLD staff approaching, uh, the owners?
Yeah, we, 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 we have been working with a developer. Um, so we have been, um, bringing them to help develop it. And of course, they're sales oriented, so they. They help bring the, um, you know, the, the experience and a list of projects that they've done. Um, so we're, we're working with them to do that and, um. They, they do have a, a contract with the state through power options, so we don't need to, to bid it out and still be in compliance with those.
Solar choice, how is this factoring in? How is that being implemented or?
So this will create more opportunities, so create more supply of recs that can be, um, bought. By the people who want to participate in renewable choice. Um, so there are these, these class one recs, which, you know, I guess we'll decide on a ongoing basis whether we. Uh, sell them or retire them. Um, and then all, there's always that choice of promoting it to customers. And I think. You know, having the, um, the publicity around these projects is we can, we can use it as an opportunity to say.
It, that, that. We need to think that through. I don't think that's a full enough, complete enough answer. We're asking the community to go to heat pumps. Their electric bill's gonna go out. Get it? The fuel's gonna go down. I know, I have the data. So there's, there is an incentive there.
Yep.
But their bill's gonna go up. If they put solar on their roof, then they can offset that electrical cost. To anyone with an optimal roof, you're gonna say, great, we'll net meter your house. You're not gonna get much payback, but at least your bill will be close to zero.
Yeah.
For the houses, and that's gonna be the majority of them, we're still gonna want them to put heat pumps in. We're gonna say. Well, and you could put solar on your roof, and they're gonna say, no, I can't. I don't have the right orientation. I don't have the right structure. She's, they didn't plan for solar roofs when they built my sixteen, uh, thirty two house. Wasn't in the design. Um, so you're gonna say, well, maybe we'll get some tax credits down the road and maybe you can kind of participate. That, that's no, that's. That can't be the only answer. When we do the fields and, and we're, we're building those solar panels in, in.
Maybe.
Wherever, yeah. And not all your projects are gonna qualify that, but the, the big ones where you, you have some value that you can, can, um. Return back. Open that up for customers to buy a panel, buy a unit of energy and participate in that. Uh, that effort in, in saying, okay, great. I can't put solar on your house, but I could put solar over in this field over here. And we'll give you a benefit for that.
Yeah.
And, and then that doesn't rule out when we get to recs and we want to have people invest in. The, uh, what is that program? Renewable choice. Just not the same thing.
Yeah, there's three, there's two different programs, renewable choice and solar choice. And what Ray's bringing up right now, um. Is the, is, is a third option, which is allow somebody to, and if they can't invest to put solar on their own roof. We'll give them an opportunity to invest and put solar somewhere else. And the idea, let's take Maple Metals for example, is, and I, so. It's ten, it's ten megawatts and we, RMLD will own nine of those megawatts and leave the last megawatt open with the frames and the racks and the inverters. And offer for those that want to buy one panel, two panel, three panels, we obviously have to keep track of it, which we can do. But they would actually own a panel in a frame that we manage and maintain. I'm just telling you, I, I hear you, Bob, but. Um, yeah, it's so, back to, back to the concept of simplicity.
And it's not a new concept.
No, 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 it's not.
We've done two projects this way already. So I'm not advocating something we haven't done already.
Agreed.
That's why I thought it was the same thing, because it sounds like something.
Well, solar choice is, is something we've done and.
So choice is in place.
Is, is still a third option. You're a renter or you're a condo owner and you, and that, that's. You, you don't have any control over your heating or cooling, and yet you still want to be able to know that.
You're doing something.
Energy you're paying is going into something. That's where the choice comes in. Um, but we need to strengthen the incentives to get more people onto heat pumps and, and being able to say. That, you know, we've strengthened the, uh, the incentives to put solar that you. Purchase on your house and give you value and credit for that, but. Hear about what we're offering and what other people are offering. I realize we're not doing a raw, straight net metering. I get it, but we. Can probably do way better than we are. Um, and if you can, then let's do, let's do a, a solar trace option. We're gonna put these. In fields at a good rate, let's. Best in, in having people contribute to that because you're right, there are gonna be some places in parking lots which aren't really cost effective.
Hmm.
Let's get some investment somewhere else where across the board, we bring the, the peaks and the, the valleys of the cost.
I think. That's make options for a broader set of individuals in our territory to participate in some way, shape or form. So that'll be our takeaway. You know, I've talked about that a little bit.
I, I, it's, it's interesting, but why should we be the solar fidelity? Right? That's not, why should we be the solar fidelity? Right? Why should we be the one to broker? Broker this. People have a, a opportunity. I, I understand that you can't get it on your house. A lot of us can't because the trees are terrain or whatever.
Okay.
You know, I, I, uh, it's, it, I like the concept of, you know, now we're getting into a. A, a, a financial system that we, we're RMLD, right? Transaction.
Consistent because we have to treat all customers fair. Think creatively in terms of how to do this. And I, your caution.
No, I, I. I, I, it's a unique concept, but I guess, you know, it's, it's two, two sides of it. Why, why, why should we get engaged in that?
Because we need land. And land is on people's houses.
Which people's houses.
And it's not.
To encourage.
Correct.
Yeah, so. No, no, so, so thanks, Ray. I, I think I really like your idea. And, and Bob, I think what we have to think about is what Ray is saying is you want to give people motivation to adopt heat pumps, right? So you, 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 what you're really looking to do is how do you incent behavior? And you have to think about how are you gonna make this work if they can't put solar? So if you're gonna give them an option to get a piece of the action, you, you're essentially opening it up to everyone. Greg, you, you, you can't block others, right? So if you're gonna make this available for one set of customers, you make it available for everyone. And then, yeah, and then the ownership piece that, um. The ownership piece that RMLD has can be a variable ownership. So you have an asset. That initially RMLD owns hundred percent of it. But then at different stages, you could have people owning different amounts. And you can set this up. Uh, on, like, Greg is gonna be building. His analytics team, there'll be some people who'll be working on models like this. So the question is, how do I build a capability? Where at one time I can maybe own a hundred percent of it, but then if I am getting other people. I can let them own part of it and then helping them, you know, have the incentive to adopt heat pumps.
Yeah, and just.
I, I, I think it's a really great idea.
We, we need, I think what you and Ray and Bob are pumped to say, think out of the box and, you know, and we'll bring back ideas. But I want to make one thing real clear is, um, we look at solar as a generation asset, right? And heat pumps, we have, we have different programs that we're putting in place relative to accelerate the adoption of air source heat pumps. So there's incentives and loans and linkages to weatherization programs. We'll walk you through over the next few sessions, what we're, how we're gonna modify those. But, um.
But, and you have to match, and you have to match the, it's not the capacity, you have to match the, the, the energy load.
Yeah, but, but I, um. Our intention is not to link solar with heat pumps, right? There's a generation opportunity and those are for people that, that want to be more non-carbon. We have, we'll have a couple of different mechanisms. And then there's the air source heat pump program. You can participate in both if you want, but they, we, we're gonna. We don't see a, a need to link those two. People can decide to do one or the other or both, mix and match to their extent. I don't, I want to be very careful. I don't tie them together. We'll give them the option to do both, but I'm not gonna force them to do both.
Yeah, no, no, it's a good idea not to link it, but you give people to Ray's point. You give people an opportunity to.
I just, I want to make sure we're on the same page. So good. Now that you're playing that back, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, yeah, well, if you're not gonna own the solar panels on a person's house. Then the person who is correct, fine, agreed.
Yeah.
Then the person who owns the house is linking it very much then, you know, so, so that. All we're saying is that the incentive we give them to, to. Generate the power that supports their heat pump is one program.
Totally fine.
And, and then for the person.
We get them all tied together.
Right, right.
But so, so no problem with that.
Keep it up. We're forming another committee.
Question is, now we're, we're talking about putting, owning solar panels on people's houses. About a whole new liability issue.
No, yeah, no, 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 I'm not talking.
We're, we're asking for an amendment to the MBTA Communities Law and require. Eight units of solar panels on every single family house.
My gaming's in that district.
Yeah, mine is too.
Onward, yes onward. Good discussion. Bill, look where you started.
You have to figure out how to get solar power on the.
Which is good.
He told me we're gonna be done.
We had a more efficient chair, maybe we would. Okay, okay, next, I didn't, I don't.
Um, I don't have any slides, but, um, we've just met once since our last meeting. Um, and talked primarily about some of the communication strategies around. Um, the next session or next topic, which is the in- territory generation with the carbon capture fuel cell. Um, we didn't come to any kind of final conclusion, but I know you guys are gonna talk a little bit about some of the messaging in the next set of slides.
Yeah, we'll talk a little about it. I think, so. One of the things that, so you'll see some of it in the next few slides, some of the, the things we talked about, uh. So, when you finish.
Okay, so, yeah, so we just, we talked about the populations that we need to communicate, some of the kind of broad messages. Um, and some of the kind of, yeah, the ti, the timing and kind of the decision makers versus inform. Just kind of awareness, um, and kind of different modes of communication for that. So. So a little bit more of an exploratory conversation, getting feedback from the committee, um, which is feedbacks took back. Um, and then we just got a quick update on the procurement milestone.
Yeah, bring it right up speed.
Yeah, so, um, so that was, that was the extent of our most recent session. Um. I do think, you know, some of the prior conversations have helped. Once we get through this, um, carbon capture fuel cell. Uh, process, if we're gonna proceed with that, um, I think the, the committee may actually. Be a great oper, great way for us to dig into some of these other options on the, on the solar as our next topic. So I know we're gonna continue the meetings, the focus on carbon capture fuel cell, but definitely see lots of additional. Picks to keep that we need focused on. Anybody else on the committee want to add anything?
Yeah, we may have to redefine the scope, right? That's all.
Yeah, at that time, yeah. If you could switch this slide, I'll go through them. I'm not gonna walk through every slide. Great, good. Um, the reason I put some of these slides up front, the mission, if somebody's looking at these after the fact, they understand the context. Um, exactly the summary, you guys know this, I'm not gonna walk you through that. Um, this is just a reminder, right? What are we trying to do? We're. We're basically, we're looking at load, um, load growth in our territory. Uh, we continually look at that on a regular basis. Um. It's roughly two X by twenty fifty. Um, as you can see, we become in this chart on the far right hand side. Um, each one of those four blocks, there's twenty twenty three in the left, the middle's twenty thirty eight and the right's twenty fifty. But you can see on the left hand, twenty twenty three, we are what is known as a summer peaking territory or. You know, uh, our, in our territory is, which is consistent with the region. As you move to the far right. Um, twenty fifty, we become a winter peaking. Um, and the reason for that is that light blue is air source heat pumps. We've got a bunch of assumptions in terms of the adoption rate, et cetera. Um, but the air source heat pumps are used for heating and cooling, but our assumption is that air source heat pumps. Um, will replace existing or small incremental addition of central air or window air conditioning. So there's a small little blue in the summer months, but the big change is in the winter months. Air source heat pumps replacing, um, either natural gas or oil, which is the predominant way of heat. The dark blue right below it is, um, EVs and those two are just the residential side. Um, and you can see the EVs and again, there's assumptions tied to EV adoptions, et cetera. Um, and we're trying to be. Realistic in terms of where it looks like, but that's the driver, that's what we're trying to fill. This is, um, just to, again, big picture, right? What we're looking at, um, is how do we, in this chart. That slashed, that, that crosshatched area is the energy that we have not yet contracted for. All the solid blocks below it are contracts in place. Our intention is to continue working on the hydro, for example. You can see that it tapers down. Our intention is to keep it at roughly twenty percent, so we will continue to look at this as opportunities come up. Uh, to continue, you know, over the long term, having that hydro be in a roughly a twenty percent range. Uh, we are aggressively looking at that. Um, we've got contracts. You can see our, our solar and wind, when it gets to twenty five, twenty six becomes big. These are contracts that we did last year and the year before, where they start coming online. We're gonna continue looking for those as well. But in that crosshatch area, we have three core options to fill that portfolio. One is to purchase on the open market in either real time, RT is real time or day ahead. We prefer to buy in day ahead. It tends to be a little bit less expensive than real time. The second element is to contract more long-term supply contracts, which are the solid bars in that chart. Or the third element is generated territory. And so we're trying to do a mix. Um, so just, just a reminder, right? If we do nothing, um, open market is the, is the default plan. Um, some of the things that we think about for the different technologies, just a quick review, uh, is capacity factor. So in a, in a nutshell, um, wind, solar, hydro and nuclear, um, and the CCF. C is the carbon capture fuel cell. You can see the capacity factor is very different. Solar is roughly seventeen percent. And while it might be a twenty mega, these are all, just to give you an example, twenty megawatt systems. If you go across the solar line at a seventy percent capacity factor, it'll generate roughly thirty thousand megawatt hours a year. We sell megawatt, we sell kilowatt hours. So while the capacity is twenty megawatts or whatever, that's great, but it's gotta deliver over time. You look at nuclear, for example, which is going ninety eight percent in our territory. So that twenty megawatts is equivalent to a hundred and seventy thousand megawatt hours. So when we look at all these different options, capacity factor is a key piece of it. As we had talked about before. Um, in territory generation is the third option, right? We will, we will always buy open market, some percentage of it. Um, we will always do long-term supply contracts. The new, the new strategy that we're putting in place right now is in territory generation. And we'll talk about the logic behind it, but it's primarily for financial reasons and reliability reasons. If we look at what we could do in territory, um. All of these are part of our portfolio, you know, right? We have wind onshore as well as offshore. Um, but it doesn't fit in our territory. We know wind towers in our territory. Um, there'll be no, we don't have any dams or any hydro in our territory right now and then we'll be built. So while we like it, there's not an opportunity for us here. Um, small modular nuclear reactor, that's the upper right-hand corner. Um, there's probably a place for that in, in the region. But not inside of our territory. And as we talked about offline earlier before our meeting. But not inside of our territory. And as we talked about offline earlier before our meeting, you know, hydrogen is. It's still, it's still down the road, so we want to be open to it at some point in time, but there's nothing for us to buy in the near term. The other options for in territory is solar PV and Bill walked us through. Our, our first step is to maximize as much solar PV as we possibly can, and that's what we're doing. Um, so additional forty megawatts is, is, is our rough target, which we think we can add to the territory and Bill gave us a bunch of examples. Um, at the bottom row there, twenty thirty-four is that low temperature geothermal. The interesting thing about low temperature geothermal, it doesn't take a lot of land space, right? It's basically going down. It's a similar concept to using geothermal, uh, it's, it's a heat pump concept. Uh, it's more than a concept, there are systems running today, but they're not, it's not yet commercially viable. It might be commercially viable in the, in the mid twenty thirties as that comes commercially viable. That's a great solution for not just our territory, but the entire region. Um, there's not a lot of open space. The short-term scenario then that we're looking at is, is the carbon capture fuel cell. Because it's available now, we're basically positioning it as a bridge technology. Um, so just big picture, and this is, so this goes into some of the discussions that we had earlier this week at our, at our, uh, subcommittee group. Is, you know, I think the phrase is responsible diversification in terms of our power supply portfolio. So the idea across here is if you look at twenty ten through twenty fifty. Um, solar is a, is a base level piece, right? We have roughly ten megawatts in territory right now. That's that first row and it'll continue, you know, those systems will probably continue running through almost twenty fifty. Um, we're going to add somewhere that next block is the, add another thirty, maybe forty megawatts of the different projects that Bill walked us through. Layer on top of that, carbon capture fuel cell, again, it will probably run just for fifteen years, we'll set, as we talked about before in this group. We'll leave the options to allow us to extend it if we decide to, but from an economic perspective, it will have basically been fully paid for. Fully utilized and have some residual value by the time we get to twenty, early twenty forties. And then the other two blocks that we talked about before, low temperature geothermal, it would start somewhere in the mid twenty thirties. Again, a lot of assumptions in terms of when that technology is commercially viable. Probably another twenty megawatts, there might be twenty-five megawatts, pay on load. And then maybe in that timeframe hydrogen, maybe in twenty forties, but the point being is we're looking at layering assets in territory assets. In a, in a, in a, in a way that basically supports our mission of reliable, low-cost, non-carbon. And fits the compliance time as well. So that's, that's how we're thinking about it. So that's kind of big picture. And this, this is actually, this slide came out of discussion we had earlier this week in terms of how to think about it. We'll work on the graphic, et cetera, but. This is how, something along these lines is what we want to put into our broader communication package, so people can get an idea of. How we're thinking about layering technologies on top of each other. Good.
Low temperature geothermal, um, kind of couch it as it's not quite developed yet, yet. Multiple universities have used it for their on-campus structures. In which they have a, a ground loop, which provides a heat and cooling loop for multiple buildings. And there was recently, uh, approved a residential ground loop. And I'm not going to get the right training, framing him. Uh, is, is the first residential style loop. I don't see that, maybe your question is that that's not generation, really.
So those systems are well-established and, and they work great. You know, we were covering fifty-one square miles and, you know.
So it would be project-based that you would do it. In other words, like you're putting in a development or you're putting in.
No, actually, so, so the individual developer would make the decision at that point as a, as a, so. Great example, right? Uh, Ken and I, earlier this year, um. Sorry, who's the, uh, anyways, there's a fifty-one unit complex that, uh, they've had interest in terms of putting in, they wanted to put fossil fuels.
Oh, that's the Toll Brothers.
Toll Brothers, yeah. So they're gonna, you know, they're looking at the option of doing, um, geothermal heat pumps. Well, either geothermal heat pumps or air source heat pumps. Um, so that's a decision that they would make on their behalf, but it's purely to generate heat. When we look at low temperature geothermal, this would be used to generate electricity.
Right, right, but I, so I realize, yes.
Yes. I mean, I don't know, you get it, Ray, but, you know, people are going to look at this video later on. That low temperature geothermal is the electricity generation.
Right.
Facility.
So. Say there's a development or some sort of, uh, zoning or, um. Review of something like maybe in the Walkers Brook area, just for example, like hypothetically. Um, you know, there's a number of office buildings, there's a number of commercial buildings, all of which demand heat. If they all individually convert to heat pumps, that's a huge energy demand. But if we can do a ground loop, we can manage that and bring that to efficiency, so it isn't a. Generation for us necessarily, but it's a demand management option.
So, uh, on that note, that's a good, that's a good prompt, Ray, you know. One of the things that we're thinking about, you know, what are we in the business providing, right? We're in the business of providing heat, light. Transportation, um, refrigeration, cooking, we all do it through electricity. So there is a scenario and we, you know, we've touched on this and we've done some initial exploration. But because we actually like assets, we are, we are. Our business, um, is friendly, economically friendly to assets, other businesses aren't. Maybe there's a scenario, we, we actually own that loop, you know, the, the, so it might cover four or five buildings. In fact, it could potentially be what we end up coming up for this campus. So I think your, your point's well taken and, and we're actually. I don't say actively looking because it's a little bit further down the road, but that concept of, hey, let's think about us being in a slightly different business. It's still, it still is energy. Still electricity, but what gets delivered might be heat and cooling. Good, good prompt, good prompt. This one, though, the idea of this one, remember. Um, it's a graphic that we actually used and I thought it was, it actually was well received at the, the Lindfield, um. Uh, water department meeting, but we basically had our map laid out and we had. Our different tie points and our different generation, potential generation asset, and you could look at it basically being a ring all the way around. So the idea is not have, not, it's, it's a core concept of distributed energy resources, in this case distributed energy generation. And so between the solar arrays and, you know, carbon capture fuel cell, low temperature geo, whatever they work out to be. It's basically in the ring, so if we have a problem in one location and, you know, this weekend, we had two, we had two squirrels. Um, one, one in Lindfield.
I got the whole town.
Yeah, that, that hit the primaries. So, you know, we, we, we want to work very, we're working diligently to, to make us more wildlife resistant. And tree resistant, but it's never going to be perfect unless you put them all in.
Tree truck went down Franklin Street last week, so we saw, I got enough close view of tree trimming activity.
So just, we're trying to, again, you know, it always takes us back, what's our mission, right? Reliable, low-cost, non-carbon energy, right? So that's what we keep trying to do over and over again, and these are all mechanisms in a world that's changing pretty quickly. I mean, um. You know, so the last two pieces, so this is the big picture, um. In terms of, you know, twenty-two, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty on the right-hand side. Um, is twenty twenty-six, um, that green, basically, we have confirmed the procurement process as a, um, our meeting that we had. On the fifth, um, ten, uh, ten days, yeah, ten days ago, two weeks ago, um, we walked through that process, um. We will, there's a, I'll walk through a little bit more detail in terms of the carbon capture piece, because there are approval steps for you guys to approve. Um, as we go through that process. But we're still, you know, looking at making sure that if we decided to go forward, we've given ourselves the ability to hit the ITC safe harbor deadline. So that's still is a important, there's a lot of work to be done. As we, as we dig a little bit deeper into this specific procurement piece. You know, what we did two weeks ago was engaging the, uh, the owner's engineer. The bid package was actually prepared, it went out. Um, there's actually a lot of interest in the, in the, we're getting a lot of responses back, they're due back. But we have questions coming in, but they're due back, um, before the July fourth holiday. Um, so in the July meeting, we will come to you and say we want to hire, you know, whatever, we'll have to look at all the different proposals. But that'll be, that'll be a specific approval to actually start spending money for real on the project. Um, hopefully we'll be able to have gotten through most of the questions we have with our subcommittee. Um, we still have some work, we have a couple of action items on natural gap. We have a couple of action items and several pieces. Um, and even if we do that, we still need to go through about six lines down, submit to the inspector general. Uh, we need to secure approval for them and then issue the bid package. And then there's going to be an evaluation in September, another approval cycle for you guys to approval, to, to go forward the next step. And even when we get to that point in time, there'll be some additional off-ramps. So there's a bunch of approval stages. That we were going to present the board with in terms of moving forward. Uh, so that's, it's kind of a, I'm giving a, kind of a quick summary of where we are in the process. Um, and you can't quite see it in this chart, but, you know, we're, we're in mid-June, we're almost late June. Questions on?
I have one question, um, if you can go back a few slides to where it shows the different types that are making up our total load. Yeah, this one. So between twenty twenty-six and twenty thirty, it looks like we're fully subscribed. Is, is that where we want to be? Are we being conservative and thinking that load requirement may be a little higher? It, it looks like we don't have any.
Will be, will be, will be ninety-five percent hedged.
Is that?
It's higher than we'd like to be.
Going forward?
Because it, it will give us price certainty. Um, so we know, we know where we'll be. Uh, the downside is the prices drop significantly, the, the, out of the money, but we'll still know what the. So rates won't go up, they'll just stay where they are, where they are.
Um, in the, in the more volatile market that we're in right now, we want to be somewhere in north of ninety percent hedged. Four years ago, three years ago, mid-twenty, you know, twenty, twenty fifteen. Um, prices were very stable, and so being sixty, seventy percent hedged was fine. Because there wasn't a lot of ups and downs. Um, you know, some of the other presentations that we shared with you guys. As we've moved that target up, we've done it steadily over the past three years, seventy-five percent, eighty percent, eighty-five percent, ninety. So in reality, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, it's probably, you know, rather be five percent less. But we're basically trying to hit that ICT target, so we're, we're not creating a problem for ourselves. Um, we still want to, we're going to continue. Tracking, um, this chart. Um, some of those contracted projects in the, particularly in the, um. In the yellow, won't get built. So that's another element, which even though they're contracted, um.
But this is assuming everything that we have planned, it stays on schedule, which.
This is not happening.
They won't.
So, so we've, we've been through the past three years and we have another project right now. Um, the developer said, look, I can't make it work unless you guys want to be in the triple-digit numbers for solar and we don't. Because it's, 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 so there's a, there's a challenge, so the, the, your question is, is really good and very appropriate. Um, we manage, like, when, when I say we manage this, like, we look at this all the time. Um, and as Bill mentioned, our intention is to make sure that we don't have any. Price bills that just are incredibly high for our customers. There'll be times when, hey, if we didn't, we weren't so hedged, we might have been a little bit lower. But our goal is to prevent against the expensive side, and sometimes, you know, we won't, we won't be in the money. It's, you know, this is, we, as we've talked about the last presentation, um, power supply is risk, it's, you know, it's a risk managing game. It's type of energy, geographic location, who's the supplier, you know, the nature of the contract, there's a whole bunch of factors we look at, and so. We fortunately are in a very good position because we've got a very, um, diversified portfolio, and that's why when we keyed off of our Monday discussion. You know, the responsible verification kind of fits into what we were doing already. Any other questions? Okay, we're going to jump to a policy review.
Greg's had a couple of sex.
Yeah. We spoke to Paul Maltz up in Parkland. We spoke to Paul Maltz up in Parkland.
Not this parking lot. So you, um, again, you know, we have a, a procedure of reviewing. Um, our policies every three years, uh, smoking happens to be, um. The, it's, it's time has come up to, to be reviewed. Um, you know, you got a chance to take a look at it, but I think at the end of the day, the key pieces, um. We streamline, as we're trying to do with all of them, you guys remember in policy nineteen, we moved all the board responsibilities into policy nineteen, we did that. I think two sessions ago, maybe three sessions ago now. So we're cleaning that up. Um, in this particular case. We are a smoke-free environment, um, but we basically, the, the main change we did besides cleaning it up. Was have it tied to the state regulations. So we're not trying to create any special regulations ourselves, we're just trying to be consistent with the state that's, so if state modifies. Our policy will modify with it. Um, there's nothing, we don't have a smoking problem here. Um, um, so it's, I mean, it's, we can, we can dig deeper into it, but this is not a. So, this is a pretty straightforward policy change. Any questions?
Good question. Just curious, um, do you have to run this through the union where it's a smoking thing and includes guys? When you make a change like this, do you have to get any type of input from them?
Because what, what, this, no, um. We don't, until, these are board policies, right? These are your policies, right? The second element is, is we're basically being consistent with the state law. So even if there was a problem, the problem's not with us.
I just didn't know if there had to be any type of buy-in at any point for that.
Any questions?
Is there a smoking area?
There's not, oh. Um, there was. No, there's not.
Was there?
Um, at one point in time there was, before my time.
I just, I, because, you know, some people still do smoke, I mean, it's still.
Yep.
They're part, part of it, and if there's a definite smoking area, then.
We don't, we don't, it's, we are legitimately a smoke-free environment.
I just don't want that to create.
Yeah, I agree. We, we, you know.
That's not something new in this policy, it has been that way, I guess.
We are, we are, we are smoke-free, we have, we don't have people smoking built. Or outside the building, or in the, or in the vehicles. Any other questions? So, pretty simple.
But I, yeah, I'm fine, I just see we're sort of moving away from smoking to smoking vaping and, and. Well, spitting, but it's the other, the chewing, um.
Well, spitting is, not to get too technical.
Yeah.
Chew all you want, but.
Yeah. Yeah, you're not swallowing, I get it.
We, we are literally, we are literally queuing up with the state reg.
Yeah, no, yeah, I get it, and, and I just. We just think of it, snow, but you've sort of expanded the definition, but you've also very clear in terms of limiting where that, that's acceptable, so.
And smoking of other substances other than tobacco is covered in the drug.
Correct. Well, we'll be talking about that in, I'll be honest.
Question, you don't test your employees' nicotine, do you?
We do drug testing. I don't know if tobacco's, I, I, I don't, I can find that, I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
We don't, yeah.
Ready for, ready for a vote?
Yeah, can anybody read the motion?
Who's going to read the motion?
I can do that. Um, is it just, there's no cabinet here, so, okay. Move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve policy four, smoking revision eight, as presented on the recommendation of the General Manager.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? Ball of favor? Motion carries five oh. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, General Manager update, since we did one two weeks ago, there's a lot of stuff in the next couple of weeks, I will send you an update on, talk about in July. But this one, um, I wanted to use this time, this is, I'm, I'm responding back to a prompt, your prompt. Um, there's a lot of stuff here. So the real message behind this is. Um, as we've talked about over the past several months, um, and we talked about it again today, right? It was part of the discussion in terms of. You know, how do we, how do we accelerate the adoption of air, how do we change the incentive structure to encourage? Weatherization, air source heat pumps, solar, et cetera, et cetera. Um. So there's a bit of context here in terms of what are we trying to have the incentives do, um. And what we looked at. Is, so we, we have programs in place that are focused on peak hours. And peak hours, so this is, I'm good, this is a, we're sharing with you ideas and thoughts, uh, it's meant to be discussion, there's more work that we need to do. But the question is, how do we really optimize our distribution network? Um. I actually had a call, Ben and I had a call with the, um. S and P Rating Agency today, we do it every two years. Um, I didn't get to the slide of this detail. But, um, you know, our. If you look at our cost structure. Our system, because it's electricity, is designed to handle peak loads. And we have a fixed capital investment to handle those peak loads, and that fixed capital investment includes poles and wires and transformers and switchgear and substations. It includes the employees and, you know, the buildings, et cetera. Um, right now, our peak, our capacity is in the two hundred and thirty megawatt range. Um, and our peak load is in the one hundred and sixty range, so we're roughly. Um, and our peak load is in the one hundred and sixty range, so we're roughly. Seven, in terms of peak capacity, we're roughly in the seventy percent of peak range. Um, in terms of looking at megawatt hours or our utilization of our. Um, capacity over all the hours in the year, which is eighty-seven, sixty. We are in, um, mid forty-five, you know, forty-six, forty-seven percent utilization. So the question we're asking is. We know, as we've discussed before, there was upward pressure on rates. Right? And rates are driven by, or bills are driven by rates times usage. And so what we're trying to look at is what things can we do? Again, so this is, we're giving you, you know, a working process, just some of these are thinking about it. In the case, you see, you look at that chart in the middle there, and that basically is, on the left-hand side is load in terms of, um. Uh, hourly load, uh, megawatt hours. Across the bottom are hours, the left end is one o'clock in the morning, in the middle of that chart is noon, and the right-hand side is midnight again. So you see on the left-hand side, that's basically the middle of the night. Um, each one of those lines is a different month of the year, this is actual customer data, so this is, this is. Five hundred actual residential customers, um, in twenty nineteen. Um, while the thing has shifted, um, we'll do another analysis of it for twenty twenty-four timeframe. Um, but the peak is always, well, currently, the peak in that timeframe has always been late afternoon. And the interesting element about peaks is those peaks define our capacity and transmission costs. And as you guys, on the left-hand side, there you can see the cast, cost categories, capacity, transmission. Certificas, energy, and operating cost, operating cost is the building and the employees, et cetera. Um. And, and what happens with the peak is what the peak does, it doesn't just change, it doesn't just affect that hour. It basically sets a ratchet that carries out for all eighty-seven, sixty hours of the year. So we are highly incented to make sure that we clip the peaks as best we can. However. Um, in the non-peak hours. All hours except for the thirteen out of eight thousand seven hundred and sixty. Were we thinking, like, if we want to keep rates down? Then we want to basically utilize our fixed, our fixed capacity at a higher level. And so what that table is, just, this is, this is food for thought, we haven't digest this all the way, but we ran a simple model. That middle column there, um, and this is loaded and net rate analysis during non-peak hours, not for thirteen hours. So our typical load, residential load is eight hundred and twenty kilowatt hours a month. And if we assume, and we just did three scenarios, let's assume that it's twenty percent higher and twenty percent lower. And what does that do to the cost structure? So. We know the capacity during those non-peak hours, capacity and transmission is fixed, right? Because we set that during the peak hour. We know that operating is fixed, because we have, as long as we stay. As long as we stay, you know, somewhere between forty-five and seventy percent of capacity. We know that the only variable is going to be energy, and as you can see in there, energy is twenty-eight out of the one forty-three. All said and done, that lower left-hand corner box is the net rate, dollars per kilowatt hour. So our base is roughly eighteen cents, uh, eighteen point three cents a kilowatt hour, but ties to what we are roughly right now. But if we were to add a twenty percent usage during non-peak hours. And we basically spread that usage because it's just variable cost or incremental cost. It would basically have a more than ten percent decrease in our rate. So we're trying to think through, back to the incentives. Again, this, I'm not, I'm just, we're sharing with you. We're, we're, we're trying to think carefully, what are we trying to, what, what behavior are we trying to change? We know we need to clip peaks, but what are we doing on the other non-peak hours? So.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sure, please.
Is this basically an argument against the public communications, because we're throwing the. Uh, you know, while we're clipping the one hour, we're also losing all this load in the hours around it?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Right? Looking at capacity utilization of a network. Is what we're trying to look at, and we're trying to go back to. The rate, there's upward pressure on rates, so we're trying to, like, what can we do to maximize rate? And one of the elements we came back to was, look, we've got a fixed asset here. And just like a manufacturing plant, like, if everybody had half capacity. Can, can we basically add more volume through it and reduce the unit cost?
So, so, and so how do you incentivize people not to charge their cars between four and eight P M? How do you incentivize people not to use their washing machines and their dishwashers? You're not gonna, you're not gonna be able to incentivize enough to cook dinner, but, you know. You're, you're trying to push, how do you, how do you incentivize to do those choice time activities? To, to.
But we don't, we don't, so back to that point, Pam, we actually don't mind if they move that load to a different time of the day.
That's what I mean, yeah. Charge your car, charge your car at one in the morning, don't. So.
I, 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 you're telling all your large manufacturing facilities and industrial companies to stop working from midnight till late A M. Right? I, I mean, that's really, that, 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 that's. With a lifestyle changer.
Not a, that's not a choice. I guess I, I was, I was thinking, this is like, how can you identify things that could happen any time of day? And instead of having them, like, incentivize them to do them at things that are.
So what, what we committed to do, what, well, we committed to ourselves, but also to share with you, how are we gonna re-revised our incentive program? What are we trying to incent? So. We want to cut peaks, you know, just, we went back to, like, ask some basic assumptions. Um, as we talked about before, our top fifty commercial industrial customers represent half of our load. Right? Half of our load. Now, Bob, back to your point, so I've got some experience with one of the other MLPs, right? And so they had, um. An alloy, basically, they were a foundry, still are, they still exist. And so, um. What that MLP did. Brain Tree, is they set their rates up so that there was a penalty for being, for running after four o'clock. They basically just shifted their operations, they still start at eight o'clock, they started at six o'clock in the morning. I'm not saying they run overnight, and that's gonna work for everybody, we did have a chance to sit down with our largest customer two weeks ago. Um. They run their plant, their semiconductor fab plant, so they're not changing anything, right? I mean. Uh. We haven't got, I, on. I, I don't, you know, it's not gonna be all third ship type stuff. But when we think about. At the end of the day, how can we think out of the box in terms of changing the behavior? And. You know, there's the new load that's coming in E V, and that you can change, like. Cause we haven't established the behavior yet, so, and we've talked about this several times, you know. Let's, let's make it inexpensive overnight, and then, and make it, you know, dirt cheap in, in the evening, I mean, make it expensive, late afternoon, and very expensive overnight. We want to be careful about doing that, because when the adoption gets, and we put that chart up a few months ago. By twenty forty, our overnight load is three times our daytime load, not good, right? We want the load to be as flat as we possibly can. Um, we had the discussions earlier this week, and shared this with you before. Um, with the A M I vendors, and so this goes back to the time of use stuff, we're trying to make sure we choose a platform. That allows us to do time of use, but almost real-time. Our working assumption is, our customers, um, really don't. They don't pay a lot of attention, most of our customers don't pay attention to electric bill. Cause the lights are always on, right? We have a really good reliability status right now, and the bills are affordable. Not for everybody, but the majority of them, like, so just, you know, I've got other things to worry about, electricity is fine, don't bother me. Um, we're still trying to figure out ways to modify customer behavior. Within certain ranges without them caring about it, so we don't have it all figured out, but there's a lot of interesting things in our discussion with the three A M I vendors that came in. Of things that we might be able to do, so it ties into this, we don't have it all figured out yet, but we're trying to tell you guys is. How do we, at, at the end of the day, what's the key driver? That's what's the net cost to a customer. Make sure the lights are on, and then obviously make sure it's not carbon, so we're hitting all these pieces. Um, this is, but, you know, we've, we've got more work to do on this analysis, but this is, this is a little bit out of the box.
So Greg, this is good information, thank you. Uh, what should, like, to Pam's point, I mean, what should the takeaway be from, from this slide for us today?
Um, I think the takeaway, Vivek, is. You know, we, so we like energy efficiency programs. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna promote them as particularly on the commercial industrial side as much as we possibly can. Um, we don't, we haven't found any interesting ways to do that. Um, I think the key takeaway is. I think the key takeaway, Vivek, is we're thinking about, um, how do we impact the net rate? It's in that green box in the other left-hand corner, dollars per kilowatt hour, people can use whatever they're gonna use when, when they want to use it. But, but the rate structure. This was intended to focus on incentives, but we're gonna do, we're preparing to do another rate study, it's another three-year period to do another rate study. And so we're kind of rethinking, so the takeaway is, we're thinking, the takeaway is, we're thinking out of the box. But we haven't, this is not a finalist, we're not making a recommendation yet.
Will the time come for time of use metering for all residential customers, that sometime in the future?
Very future.
I mean, that, that's the only way I think it'll really affect us.
Yeah, but it's also gonna be, Ken, um, it's gonna be how we actually, you know, what. The ability of the metering system to do that is going to be a foundational base. Right? So that's part of the evaluation we're doing right now with the A M I selection process. How we, how we apply it is what we're starting about, you know, how we put rates against it, et cetera. Um. Because even if you've got a variable time of use rates, as long as the bill's not crazy. And most of our customers aren't gonna pay a lot of attention.
But that assumption's gonna change.
I don't, I think you're probably right, Ray, is at some point, when that bill gets up to, whatever the number gets to be, two hundred or three hundred dollars.
As soon as you put your first heat pump in and buy your first electric car. How much you care about your electric bill is gonna change.
Yeah.
And, and so I agree, right now, when you only see a fifty or a hundred. Two hundred dollar electric bill, you go like, oh, it's summer, I put the A C on, like, yeah, okay, no big deal. You see a four hundred dollar winter bill. You're gonna go, oh, maybe I can do something to offset that. So.
But Ray, Ray, but Ray, what you're not seeing is, you're not seeing the natural gas bill, right? You're not seeing the natural gas, you're not seeing. So you have to optimize it that way.
I don't care about my oil bill, the gas bill anymore, cause they don't have it anymore.
No, no, but you, you, you gotta know.
Coming out of my electric bill, so now I'm caring about my electric bill. So, so yes, you're right, oh, absolutely, there's, there's a net benefit already, and that, I convinced myself of that net benefit to do the. The changeover to begin with, now that I've bought, bought into the changeover. Now I'm looking at a four or five hundred dollar electric bill, and so now I'm open to things that I can do to affect that, yeah, I mean. There's savings, and then there's more savings, and then there's some more savings, so how much can I, what can I do on that? Where the compatibility is, is that we also want to affect behavior, we also want you to buy. Electricity from certain times, so there's two incentives, there's the incentive of the person who will now care. Um, that their electric bill is, is more manageable, and that we care when they buy that power, so.
Uh, when they use that power.
When they, when they.
You gotta buy it, you're exactly right.
When they draw.
Yeah.
And, and so, yeah, I would just caution that, yeah, no one cares, I think they will care, and, and I think being able to say.
Not, 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 not the proper choice of words. At the end of the day, what we have learned is we want to make it as easy as possible for the customers to respond and change.
Correct.
Make it easy for them, and so those are the kind of things we're looking at. Um, with, back to some of the A M I systems have got some capabilities to do stuff in background mode.
This, the only thing you have, I think we always have to keep in mind is. Rate structures should not be punitive for people that maybe didn't adopt. Right? If, if you did, yeah, it's gonna be a twenty, twenty-five, thirty-year transition, right?
Oh, it is.
And you don't need to be punishing someone who does get home at four or five o'clock in the afternoon, the kids get home, TV goes on. You know, oven goes on. Now I'm saying, do, now I'm saying, start your electric dryer, turn on your dishwasher. Yeah, but the energy consumption goes up, cause everybody's using it, right? You, you want to make sure that your rate structure is not punitive for, for everybody, you know, and, and time of use is punitive at peak times. It may, this, yeah, I mean, it, 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 it is, by, you know, you're using more, but, you know, if we up our rate, you know. Rate structure for pure time of use, you have to take into account that, you know, there's a lot, not everyone can adapt their lifestyle.
And so, on that, on that note, so. Again, this is, again, this is, this, this, we're, we're discussing and looking and exploring. The other element is, um, are there things that we can do in our network to time shift? When we purchase the power and when the customer uses the power? And so we've talked, you know, we talked a couple of months ago, and we're, we'll give an update on it. Soon, is that Form Energy Project, right? And what's different about that Form Energy Project, it is a hundred-hour battery system, not a two-hour battery system. So while, while the existing systems we're putting in place are focused on the peaks. This form thing is more, it, it, it's more of a time shifting mechanism. So we're, we're, the modeling that, that Form and Bill's team have been working on there said, hey. The reason why we've continued to push forward on it, cause it's, it's not perfect. But it, it, it's gonna create a different element where we can actually time shift customers, so back to your point of not being punitive. We haven't got it all figured out yet, but we're, we're trying to look at all these different elements, it's, we're in a, back to your point, right? The annual, the, the monthly bill is going to go up, right? There's only upward pressure on it, because the usage is gonna increase. And the rates are gonna increase, and so all we're looking at here is like, hey, you know, what levers can we pull on rates? We haven't got it all figured out yet, we, we know in territory generation for all the economic reasons, we'll do, I mean, however we do it, right? There's logic. This gets into the incentives in terms of what kind of behaviors we're trying to drive, and what pieces of equipment we want people to adopt. We love air source heat pumps because we think that ultimately it benefits the people that put the air source heat pump in, and. All the other rate payers, everybody wins. E V's a little bit different, air source heat pump, everybody wins, whether you bought one or not, you're better off. I'll stop there, that's all.
The, thank, thank you for that, the, the prompt that I had given was more specific to this week, which is the heatwave week, because we had. A forecast last week of back-to-back hundred, hundred-degree days.
Yep.
And, um, I read that I Soto England said was predicting today would be the peak so far this year. Which means unless we get another big blast of a heat wave on a business day, it might well have been. The annual peak today, might be, we don't know, but if it is true that it was the peak today as a, the year so far. It's a contender for the annual peak, yeah, so the question I had was to walk us through what measures did R M L D take? To prepare for this heatwave, and what happened, what was done, what was communicated, what buttons did you push? To educate the board, to cab, new board members, so what did R M L D do?
Yeah.
Uh, so there was a, there used to be a communication strategy that consisted not only of group emails, but. You're lifting pounds to say things, even I've, I've gotten reverse nine-one-one calls a couple of times over the years, sometimes when it's really a bad day. That gets implemented, so what was done this week?
Yeah. So, and we're at a transition point on our communication, um, our public communication, but what we did do, um, yesterday. And today, um, is we ran our generator, which was two and a half megawatt.
Which happens all the regularly, right?
Yeah, rock solid, always works. Um, and then we also ran our battery, so.
Right.
Um, the, the bat, so we have one five-megawatt battery system, um. So in peril, so what we didn't do today, cause we don't have the other twenty megawatts of battery systems in place, but that's the part, that's not part of it, that's a key piece. I were putting that additional twenty megawatts in. So, you know, part of the challenge in terms of battery system is where you put them.
Right.
I connect them to the network, et cetera, so, so we are strong proponents of battery systems, because, um. As, as we talked about before, and what I didn't finish doing on this analysis, Dave, was the second step, which is. You know, the fifty percent of our load is, is the top fifty customers, um. And there's one that has the ability, you know, from their process perspective to make adjustments.
So who did what today?
We, so none of our, I, I don't know of any of our customers, so we didn't, we were not successful in terms of communicating to our customer today to say it's a peak day. Um.
Why not? What, I mean, what, just tell us what usually happens and what didn't.
Usually, um, our, we have a, we have an email program that goes out, and we have a, so. We don't have a communication manager or a marketing manager hired yet. Uh, we didn't get it done, um, today, because as we went to go do that, um, we uncovered that our constant contact, um.
Email vendor or the password is what?
Yeah, so anyways, um, it issues administratively that we will fix next week, um. But it's, it's our internal fault for not doing as much as we possibly could.
So the mass email didn't go out?
Correct.
Do we do tweets? Do we let the town halls know to post or do anything or?
We didn't know of that today, Dave, the only we did is we ran, we ran our generator and we ran our batteries.
My, my wife commented, she was surprised she didn't get it.
Yeah, that's.
So, so my, my, that, and that's a positive.
That's a good, that's a good point.
That, that's a positive, in the sense that people have been getting the message.
Yeah.
The shave the peak, and they were looking for that feedback to respond now. We had limited things that we could do.
Yeah.
But, um, but nevertheless.
Yeah, I think, I think.
She commented that that was missing.
So, so part of this goes back to, um, you, you know, we talked about shave the peak program, or shred the peak program. Um, when it got introduced in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, it was pretty effective. But it has not been very effective since then, so one of the other things we're trying to do is, how do we change that? And then, and, um.
Change what?
The shred the peak program. We have a program, whether we communicate it or not, um, in the past. We've had very little participation, and if it hap- if they happen to drop. We've had very little participation. And if it hap, if they happened to drop load, it was by coincidence, not by design. So we have not yet taken the time to update that program. But when I say program, the shred, you know, the whole strategy behind it. The current structure is not effective. So we have, we have a, among, independent of the communication stuff. And even if we did communicate it, it would not have merited much because it hasn't historically. So our first step is really to fix the shred the peak program. And since it's summer, this is appropriate time to do that.
Two, two things. One is. Sometimes. When we tell customers that. The bill that you get is in part based on when we get our peak power. Sending out a message, shred the peak. May not give you the reduction in power. But it sends the message that when you get your bill and we talk about peak power, it was these days.
Yeah.
And so there's a communication about a link between which days affect us and which days don't. Maybe you respond to that, maybe you don't, but it's part of an overall communication of. When you get your bill and, and what things about your bill are upward driving light rates. You know, when we, when we say shred the peak, it was because of those events. You heard us say these events are happening, still part of that messaging. I want to also say, Ken. Is there software tools? That exist? And I said, we want to create it. We're not creating a, a software environment here at RMLD. That can it give the customer, I want to say the illusion of control. Uh, in the sense that it would, it, it will pull data from a variety of different places and allow them to see. What's happening for them or within the system or. How they might be able to make a decision about energy use on a platform. Some sort of feedback. I mean, I want to say illusion of control because. It, it might not actually push a button on your phone and actually change a device, but it might give them enough idea of. System wide demands going up, my, my individual time of use meters going up, how much can we? You know, give back to the customer in terms of.
If we're looking at customer segment, but customer segment in terms of what we do. But remind me, in addition to the AMI system, um, we are partially implemented with an MDM system. As a meter data management system, part of that meter data management system includes a customer portal. We have all the trigger to open that customer portal, but that'll be another mechanism. In terms of being able to communicate with the customer, every residential customer will have access to it should they decide to go after it. Um, we've got a, a, a program, so we're ready to move forward on a, um. A mobile app, again, off the shelf type stuff. So those will be all elements. Newsletters are good. I think the other element though, that, that, um, in talking with other public power entities around the country that was the most successful. Was the guy that basically sent a text at the end of today and said, hey, you dropped X, Y, or Z. You earn a dollar, you earn two dollars tomorrow. It would have been yesterday and then tomorrow. And so today, tomorrow's going to be a hundred days. So. You know, see if you can earn, see if you can do better, it's another dollar or two. We have to work through the mechanics of that. Um.
Yeah.
There's, there's different pieces that, you know, every customer segments has a different level of ability to drop load.
How we all feel on another hour and a half?
Again, sorry, I, I, I just had one comment. Actually, Greg, I think you answered my question. I said, you know, the slide you have on the screen. It talks about our load and how we're thinking about it. And I, I was just wondering, you know, there's so many other utilities across the country and so many munis that are all grappling with the same issue. So, uh, what have we learned from them? I think you touched upon some of it, but is there anything more that? Looking at this chart and are, are you comparing notes with other people? I'm sure you are, but I just, you know, just could, if you could. Give us a sense of how you're thinking about it in the context of what others are also doing.
So, um. Yes, as the answer to the question to learn from, from what other people are doing, um, Bill and Ben had a chance, Bill, um, Bill. And Ben Blumenthal had a chance to attend the APPA conference, um, last week. So they're collecting their notes in terms of what they learned as well. We'll be happy to share that with you guys at the next meeting as well. So yes. You know, we are, you know, I think as, as you guys know, us as an organization and me specifically. We are open to input and suggestions, you know, we're trying to learn and make it better. So to answer your question. Um, we're digesting stuff we got back last week. We have not implemented yet.
Thank you.
Do you want to? One thing is like, it goes back to what Ray said, and I never thought about it until Ray said it comes down to demand management. And it has to come down to not thinking about it. So when he talked about putting a giant loop in a neighborhood and things like that. That's when you can cause effect and make change. But when I have to go home and turn my AC off and not do the normal things I do. It makes it very difficult. But you have the, that program from the media, we have the three biggest buildings in town with a tangent system.
Yeah.
I can go in and get a graph of, um, what my usage was for each day, for a week, for a month. And I also can get ambient temperature. And I watch this happen. My temperature goes up, my kilowatt usage goes up. And when it goes down, it goes down. And. Um, same in the winter. And it's just amazing how it works, but I can't change what's going on because I can't stop. The public safety building from running twenty-four hours a day. I can't stop a school from having events at night. So it's all those different things you look at and soon we'll have two electric buildings. And so all those things are going to increase, but it's also going to follow that peak. So. My usage is higher in the day, but at night I'm still using more when, I'm not going to not have meetings in those buildings or not use them.
Yeah.
But it's interesting to watch the weather really control.
We're getting one more data and how do we apply that data? And, and again, we're going to hope there'll be a whole bunch of different, like everybody. People are trying different pieces. But the time shifting piece is the one, if you want to make it, again, the core piece, make it as easy for our customers to do load, which means they don't do anything. Right? They basically say, hey, we'll give you, here are the parameters that you can play with in my, in my load. You can, you can go between, you know, sixty-eight and seventy-eight. You can, you know, you can jump from my water heater between X and Y temperature. You can charge my EV or discharge whatever they work. I mean, we've got an idea of what it looks like. But stay within that and, and, you know, you know, let me know how well we did. Yeah, we'll be doing it. At, at, at the end of the day, it'll be an expert system. But that's ultimately, we think where we're going. Because again. Make it easy as possible for the customer to participate. And the other element we've got, which is a benefit, we have a, we have a broad set of customers, right? School's going to operate differently than the public safety than a residential home than, than semiconductor. Anyways, more work to be done.
Be good, be good.
I, I had one, one question. Uh, I'll wait. It's on the financials, but I don't know for the. So on the.
Oh, I thought we were, I thought we were through the agenda already.
It's on the thing. So on the, um. On the financials, where we look at our current, yeah, the date. And we get down to our power expenses. So it's on page two of the, um, five. Right? We had a.
We looked at slide sixty-eight or sixty-nine, sixty. Look at the upper right hand corner. Let's see, let's see. That's nice.
I don't have one of those. Well, so.
The other came in the package, is what you're saying.
Okay, very, one of the very last pages in the package. On the appendix.
Yeah, so this is basically results through the end of March.
Yeah, so page two, the purchased power, our purchased power went up fifty percent from last year. Significant jump. So. I guess. I'm, I'm wondering why a power. Uh, fuel charge has gone up so high this year, you know, relatively speaking, guess, you know, what, what? What's, is that a pass through? What's going on in that particular one? For purchases, is it a straight pass through or did we? Do something different because I don't think prices are that significantly different from this year to last year. But why is that one jumping off the page?
Keep, keep in mind, that's a, that's a net mix. And so the biggest piece of that is that hydro became a bigger piece of the portfolio. In that, this is the first three months and hydro is, is more expensive than natural gas. Natural gas was low. But we are, we are hedged. This is what we're talking about before. We might leave money on the table. We're trying to dampen. I mean, these are, these are straight expenses and we haven't done any magical changes to our power supply portfolio.
You have capacity.
Well, this is just, this is just.
Yeah, yeah. That purchased power, fuel, right? That, that, that's, that's fuel, right? That, that, that seems like a straight.
Well, the, the other element is this winter was colder, so it's both the rates and it's also the amount. So remember last year, we were three percent lower, we're now three percent higher. So we did less energy purchases. In twenty twenty-two year to date than we did in twenty twenty-three year to date.
This is twenty-three versus twenty-four, right?
I'm sorry, twenty-three versus twenty-four.
Just, it, it, it's just a big, you know, just. That wouldn't seem to jump, jump up because that's, that's a big change. That's three million bucks. I mean. Did we shift anything from capacity to purchase power?
I'm looking at that number.
Capacity without.
I see that, yeah.
That should be relatively safe. Yeah.
Well, it's tied to, it's tied to usage. We'll go back and take a look at it.
Okay, that's all.
Good scheduling. We good with the, I've been talking to me two meetings?
Yeah.
Yeah, no changes. Okay. Maybe, uh, maybe at the next meeting, we could just walk us through what is the updated or the newly implemented communications plan for a peak day? And if it happened to fall between now and July twenty-fifth, maybe let us know like what happened. Like what were, what were you able to do when you got the word from ISO to England of a projected peak? Like what did the department do? I, would be a nice report to get.
Okay, sounds great.
Yeah. So. I think that leaves us with the most important motion of the day.
Move that the citizen advisory board adjourned regular session.
Full call vote.
Second. Ken Walter, aye?
Jason Swae, Kim Wood, aye?
Dennis Kelly, aye?
Vivek Soni, aye?
Move that the board of commissioners adjourned regular session.
Second, second.
Yep, okay. All in favor?
Mr. Pacino, aye?
How about I?
What are I?
This concludes the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to the heat. We need to back in here, please.